Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council to order Tuesday, March 3, 2015. Council of Green, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Cork, would you call the roll, please?
(inaudible) here.
Here.
Counselor Boachman.
Present.
Counselor Beesaw.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Josephs.
Present.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Present.
Counselor Tran.
Here.
We will now have the public forum. Anybody wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing a public hearing petition, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the Senate table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number and the agenda you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak? Mr. Rashudi, good evening.
Good evening, Counselors. My name is John Rashudi, Park Commissioner in the City of Pittsburgh. I would like to talk on orders 030-15 and 031-15. I'm going to ask you to please vote on these tonight so that we can get on with our problem. We have the intentions that if it doesn't get voted on and it goes to another date, we're still pursuing. So, I'm asking you, please, it's a hard decision to make, but vote on it. Let's not go and push it to a committee or any other ways to go. We want to get this done as quick as possible. We want to do what's right for the city, and we would like to protect our land. So, I'm asking you, please, vote on it one way or the other. Thank you, Counselors.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Eric Short. My address is 502 Holman Street in Lunenburg, Mass. I want to speak on 30-15 and 31-15. I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak again tonight. Everyone in the council and the mayor are well aware at this point how I feel about the Landry fight between the community and FSU. I'm not going to go over everything again because I think at this point, everybody is up to speed on all the details of the battle. There are a few points that I just want to bring up before the vote is made tonight. First, the new One Arena schedule was not a success this year, as stated publicly by FSU President Robert Antonucci and FSU Public Relations Director, Mr. Braun. I actually find it totally irresponsible for an institute of higher learning to state publicly that the schedule was a success without reaching out to any of the WCC users to totally, to actually see how they were doing this year with the current schedule. What was successful, other than them moving forward with their plan to completely take over the city, the facility from the city? Most high schools lost 20% or more practice times. Many had to travel to Gardner and other communities to practice. One adult league folded completely, and most others lost significant numbers of players and reduced their schedules dramatically. And the men in youth tournaments that brought in thousands to this community are now gone. This list of negatives can go on and on. On top of all this, if the rumor is true that FSU's hockey team will eventually go back to their afternoon practice slot, the schedule will get dramatically worse for the youth programs in the high school. This is a fact. Second, it's clear that FSU is moving forward with their original plan to take over the community arena for their own use. They have stated publicly that their students will have first priority over a facility that's been used exclusively by the community for 40 years. At what point is the City Council and the mayor going to step in and defend the rights of the community? Were you all elected by the administration of FSU or the citizens of the City of Pittsburgh? Mr. Caddy stated a few weeks ago at a Parks Board meeting that FSU is doing what they feel is best for them and their students. We need to do what is best for our city. I 100% agree with this statement. It's time that you stop FSU from moving forward and attempt to take control of this situation before this valuable asset is lost for good. Finally, Mayor Wong, over the past year, has sent basically the same email out multiple times, asking the same questions over and over again, and stating she'd like to arrange negotiations with FSU and the city. Obviously, with demolitions set to begin any day, FSU is not interested in serious negotiations with the mayor or the city unless they can get exactly what they want. Her questions have been answered publicly and via email by the SLAA, Parks Board, and some members of this council. It's simple. The solution in compromise is a multi-use facility that'll have ice three months a year. This is not ideal for either side, but would benefit both FSU and the community. If FSU won't accept this option and won't sit down to try to make it happen, then go to court, find out who has control. If a court rules the city has the upper hand, FSU will be forced to make adjustments or probably, or possibly lose not just Landry, but the entire facility. I would imagine FSU would be willing to actually negotiate if this was the case and that sacred parking was in jeopardy. I would imagine it's not going to cost the city any extra money to have Landry sit there while this gets worked out in the courts. I personally, along with thousands of members of the SLAA now, feel strongly that the City Council will be letting the City of Pittsburgh down if they don't move forward tonight with approving funding for legal action for this takeover. You can't sit back and simply let FSU take Landry away with literally nothing in return to the city. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Those with written comments, I will ask you to try to keep it to the two minutes.
No problem. Hi, my name is Casey Bolak. I live on 37 Independence Drive in Lemonster. I'm the head coach of the Lemonster High Hockey Team, and I just, I've been asked to speak today to talk about how the season went as far as scheduling goes. Lemonster High is one of the few programs in the area that has, has been able to sustain a full junior varsity program as well as a varsity program. We have 40 athletes, student athletes, that we try to get on the ice all the time. Our junior varsity program, however, counting practices and games, was only on the ice 30 times in the last three months. That's like having your JV football team, or your JV basketball team, or baseball team, practicing or playing a game every third day, and then 20% of that time going to the Gardner High School gym to make that happen. It's hurting our hockey program, not just for my high school and Lemonster High, but for our area. It's, it's not going to be sustainable. Students won't play on a junior varsity program that's on the ice 30 times in three months. They'll find somewhere else to play. Our varsity program had over 25 examples of either not being able to practice or having to practice at a different rink. We did have the opportunity to qualify for playoffs, and finding ice after that time was difficult, if not almost impossible. It was an awful struggle throughout the year as well, as far as scheduling went for our home games. We had 10 home games, and only two of them started after 5:00. So, we had home games at 3:30 in the afternoon, 4:00, some during school vacation at noon, at 11:00. These, and I say this is not as a, as where I'm concerned about having more fans, but this is a vital part to a hockey program, is by gaining fans, that's a way we sustain our program as well. And having a game at 3:30 in the afternoon because we can't have as much ice time on these other days is really been a detriment to the program as well. I'm here to urge you guys to, to please vote, but also try to come up with a compromise that'll work for, for everybody. If we can get this to work, it, it should be able to work. We should be able to be adults and make this, and make this work for everybody. It's disappointing that it's gone this far, and I really, really urge you guys to vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Steve Lowney. I'm the head coach of the Pittsburgh Monte Tech Ice Hockey Program. I'm going to touch on two, 30 Hot Stone Lane, Drakehead, Mass., 03015 and 3115. There's been two positions held by the university that closing the Landry will have minimal impact on the user groups. Our practice time is already down approximately 25%. We have many practices in Gardner, and we have taken many practices during off-hours, including 5:30 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. 2:30 necessitates Monte Tech getting an early dismissal. While the administration has been understanding this year, I have to wonder how long they will be understanding dismissing their students for athletics. These are three Pittsburgh schools using a Gardner facility regularly already. This is with North Middlesex and Lunenburg, graciously moving to many practices to the Groton School with no promise for the future. Simple math, knowing how many users use the ice at the Wallace Civic Center, and you know there is not enough ice time for the user groups. The university reports the Landry is not financially viable. The Save the Landry Association has proven that is not the case. Easily in a matter of weeks, finding more than enough users willing to take on more ice time, pay higher rates, and uncovering new users that were not given the courtesy of a meeting. I ask what business can be financially viable when they do not only not pursue new clients, but refuse to meet with them? The Landry is a community facility given to the city for the community, not for the university to take over and give to its students on inaccurate information. I am going to make a prediction, and it's not hyperbole. With a one-rink facility, Pittsburgh and Monte Tech, two Pittsburgh schools, will not sustain a program, and this would, this will be the near future. Whatever youth players are left in the city will be turned off, what they will know as a lack of ice time for practices, and whether it's Gardner or Pittsburgh, the times will not be ideal. And they will choose to go elsewhere. The better ones with financial means will choose St. John's Prep School or Junior Hockey, and others in the city will turn to school choice. I hope you will vote on this tonight, and I hope you will consider the impact closing the Landry will have on the youth, adults, and high school hockey players of Pittsburgh and the surrounding communities. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Nelson, 45, Batthave, Lemonster. I have a business in Pittsburgh at 983 John Fitch Highway, and I'm a member of the Save the Landry Arena Association. I would like to thank the City Council for hearing this issue tonight, and would like to thank the Parks Commissioners for the continued tireless fight to save the Landry Arena from falling into the hands of Pittsburgh State. As I sit here almost 18 months after the university made its public plans, its plans public, it's hard to believe that this situation was able to ever get to this point. It seems to me that the checks and balances of the City of Pittsburgh has in place has failed miserably up to this point, but now is the time to change that. What's right is right, and what's wrong is wrong, is what is at issue here. The matter is not only about saving a gift that was given to the City of Pittsburgh and its citizens, but also about stopping the bully from imposing their will any further. If this situation is not stopped, and the university is allowed to flex their muscles, then what is next? The mayor and other politicians in the city have stated on more than one occasion that the city cannot afford to take the Landry or the facility back. If that's the case, then if there are other properties in this city that the city can't afford the upkeep on, then should the university be able to strong-arm them from the city? I'm here to say that a judge, and only a judge, should make a decision in regards to what's right and what's wrong here. This is America, and there is a judicial process for a reason. I believe that due to the numerous violations that the university has made in regards to the lease, that the city should be seeking not only to get the Landry Arena back, but should be going after the whole facility. I do not want to hear again from one person that the university was a knight in shining armor who rode in on a white horse and saved the facility for the city. They saw a selfish opportunity to act like a hero, all the while looking out for their own best interest. Millions of dollars received and basically nothing invested into the planetarium, the Galaxy Room, or the Landry Arena. Instead, they fixed up completely their signature arena and were able to get parking for their students and access to their athletic fields, et cetera. Don't be so naive as to believe that if they change the Landry into a fieldhouse for their students, that the takeover will stop there. Currently, the public is allowed to use the facility, but if the takeover happens, then slowly but surely, that will come to an end in the not-so-distant future. The time to sit down for discussion with the university has come and gone. They have been offered a seat at numerous occasions for discussion and have disrespectfully not responded to numerous requests from the City Council and the Parks Department. From what I can see at this point, they have two choices. They either agree to make it a multi-use facility, one that can accommodate skaters for 90 days a year, or bring this to court and let the judge decide. The university has, on more than one occasion, made the comment that they can only use university and student funds for a facility that their students use on a majority basis. Our solution to that is to allow skating at the arena for 90 days out of the year, and they can use the facility for 275 days after that. I believe that that concession is more than noble, considering it is our facility and it's the public's in the first place. I do not care if the city has or does not have the money or funds to run the facility. If the university does not want to concede to those 90 days to the public, then the matter needs to go in front of a judge for a ruling. If a court rules that the university has a right to proceed, then we will accept that decision. And if a judge rules to the contrary, then the city needs to do what's right for the city and take the facility back and devise a game plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public forum? Mr. Brey?
Counselors? My name is Jay Brey. I'm from Pittsburgh State University. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I come here tonight to reaffirm Pittsburgh State University's commitment to work with the city authorities on our efforts to secure the long-term viability of Landry Arena as part of the Wallace Civic Center. As much analysis and reflection has gone into this, we're still convinced that the multi-season, multi-sport facility is the best valuable for, best value for the community resources. The university remains committed to the honoring George Wallace's wishes for the Civic Center to serve the people of the Pittsburgh. We believe our plans comply, but we are more than willing to look at the lease language to make it unequivocal, clear, that the university programming is scheduled, followed by residents of Pittsburgh citizens, excuse me, the residents of the City of Pittsburgh having the second priority following the university. We understand the Park Board Commission's concern about the legal process governing the transfer and the use of parkland. We stand ready to assist the Commissioners in addressing these issues. In closing, we believe strongly that this proposal is to redevelop Landry will benefit not only the university, but the community of Pittsburgh. The partnership between the campus and the city has been and remains a priority of ours, as demonstrated by our collaboration with local institutions and with the city and investments in local infrastructure. The renovated Landry Arena will be a facility that the city schools can, can use to support indoor field hockey, softball, baseball practices, for example, while also being used by your city recreation department for programming for all residents of the city. Through this, we look forward to working with you and your agencies to resolve this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at the public forum?
Good evening. I'm running Laxo, Commissioner of Public Works. I'd like to speak about order number 36-15, which, which requests another $125,000 to be transferred from available funds to the snow and ice accounts. That will bring our total budget for the year up to $1,277,800. Over the past couple of weeks, we've concentrated on widening the streets. Many of the streets were too narrow for public safety vehicles, school buses, waste management trucks, and general traffic. The widening has gone very well. We've gotten a lot of streets done in a short time, thanks in part to assistance that we've received from MEMA in the form of operators and equipment, but that assistance ended today. So, we're going to be scaling back to our normal working hours as far as the widening, widening goes. Then late last week, we heard from MEMA that they hope to get FEMA assistance for all the communities in the state for this severe winter that we've had. So, by the end of the week, we have to compile our costs for the four-week period from January 26 until February 22, and, you know, if we get the disaster assistance, that would be a big boost for the budget.
Motion to suspend the rules on 36-15.
Second.
We have a motion, second, for suspension of the rules on 36-15. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion.
It is before you.
Motion to approve 36-15.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, to approve 36-15. All those in favor?
Aye.
Speaking of the motion, Counselor Johnson.
Mr. Jody. Is that leaving you, according to this, $7,000 short, or it says $132,000, $33,000? Is that because we're hoping to get other monies for that, or?
Yeah, this $125,000 will pretty much make us break even right now, so there's still more wanting to come, unfortunately, so, you know, we'll have to address that.
But I'm just looking at what you gave us, and it said that our balance remaining $132, $133, and you want to transfer $125. So, are we still going into the $7,000 short?
We'll be a little bit short, yes.
Not counting whatever comes tonight.
Right.
And in the near future.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion, second, on 36-15. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public forum? All have been heard. We will move to, forward to the Committee on Records. Counselor Green.
Yes, I'd like to report that the minutes have been looked over and are in order.
The report from the Committee on Records will be adopted.
Second. We have a motion, the second, that the Committee on Records report be approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Appointments Committee, Counselor Bean.
Mr. President, the Appointments Committee met tonight. We postponed two student police officers' appointments till this coming Thursday, and then we appointed, we granted the approval of, voted for approval of two permanent firefighters of the Pittsburgh Fire Department, Samuel Garcia and Kenneth Holmes. We're both here present tonight. And we also had a reappointment to the Human Rights Commission, Jonah Dos Santos. Her term expires May 1, 2018, and that was unanimously approved also by the committee.
Motion to accept the Appointments Committee report and for the appointments to be confirmed.
Second. We have a motion, the second, to accept the Appointments Committee report and confirm the appointments. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The two police officers will come forward, the clerk will...
Firefighters.
Firefighters, sorry. We've got too many people on the end. Two firefighters will come forward, the clerk will swear you in in the well, and when the clerk, clerk is swearing them in, everybody who wants to take pictures can do them, and afters will have an opportunity to take pictures of family and friends and whomever, and the
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me to take an oath. I do solemnly promise and swear...
I do solemnly promise and swear.
...that I will faithfully and impartially... And to the best of my knowledge and ability...
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
...perform and discharge all the duties...
Perform and discharge all the duties.
...incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
...as a permanent firefighter...
As a permanent firefighter.
...for the Pittsburgh Fire Department.
For the Pittsburgh Fire Department.
So help me God.
Pictures with any money?
I just signed this paycheck. Let me out. Oh, let me get out of the picture.
Yeah, please. Moving forward to communications from her honor, the mayor. Dear President, President Hay, consideration of the recommendations of the Planning Board and comments by various citizens regarding the fiscal year 41 Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, I hereby submit to the City Council the following year 41 CDBG applications for year review. That will be sent to finance.
Mr. President, can I speak now for a moment?
Certainly, Counselor Bean.
Thanks to Counselor Deanna Tally, I was able to get a copy of last year's recommendations and went through it. And in last year's program, and last year had performance measurements on each one of the accounts. I was wondering if we can get some kind of feedback on who's measuring those performance measurements, and is it working out?
My expectation is that Mr. Cassar is the one who does that and has to forward those measurements to, in order to be able to continue to draw down and spend that money. Okay, I will check that and get something back to us in writing or...
Perfect. It could be helpful documentation for us to see if these programs are working, if they're, if they're performing as we expected when we voted for them a year ago, and give us some good insight as we go forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Honorable Counselors, effective March 2, 2015, I hereby appoint the following members of the Pittsburgh Police Department to succeeding temporary positions until such time as an assessment center can be completed for the position of permanent police captain. Lieutenant Stephen D. Janini to the position of acting Pittsburgh Police Captain. Sergeant Timothy M. McDermott to the position of acting Pittsburgh Police Lieutenant. Officer Scott S. Gabriel to the position of acting Pittsburgh Police Sergeant. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. The Honorable Counselors. Oh, no, these are the letters.
There's another one after that.
Okay, because they'll refer to appointments, I'm sorry. The Honorable Counselors, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation of Mr. Alexander J. Griffin of 28 Boydin Road Holden as a student police officer for the Pittsburgh Police Department. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor.
Would that be moved to the Appointments Committee meeting held on this coming Thursday? The agenda reflect that?
The Honorable Counselors, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation of Ms. Diane Welch of 29 Canton Street, Pittsburgh, Mass., as a member of the Board of Registars, Registars of Voters for a term to expire February 1, 2017. Ms. Welch will be, fill the remaining term of Ms. Rosemary Wadi, whose resignation came effective January 15, 2015. Ms. Welch has previously served on the Board of Registars of Voters, and he looks forward to working with her moving forward. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor.
For the Appointments Committee, it's the following meeting.
The Honorable Counselors, I am ready to inform you that as we are, I hereby promote Captain Paul Vazikis to the rank of permanent deputy chief in the Pittsburgh Police Department effective March 2, 2015. Captain Vazikis scored highest on the recent civil service examination for the rank of police deputy chief. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. And if Deputy Chief Vazikis will come forward, the mayor will swear him in, and we'll do the same thing with pictures with family and everything after the swearing in.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me to take an oath. I do solemnly promise and swear...
I do solemnly promise and swear.
...that I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially.
...and to the best of my knowledge and ability...
And to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
...perform and discharge all the duties...
Perform and discharge all the duties.
...incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
...as permanent deputy chief...
As permanent deputy chief.
...in the Pittsburgh Police Department.
In the Pittsburgh Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.[1784.64] Congratulations. Take a picture.
He did a good job, yeah.
Oh, taking pictures.
I think.
He's not the president.
Retired two weeks.
He's out already. We don't even know him.
It's not happening, Chris. No worries.
No, we want to make it right.
You only get to do this once.
Exactly.
Everybody ready? Say deputy.
Yeah.
On mine, it pops out to show that it's going.
I covered the mic.
No words.
Mr. President, if I may, while we have retired Deputy Chief Currents here, just like to congratulate him on his retirement, I'm sure the council would like to wish him well.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
We'll see him come in as a special police officer very soon.
Thank you very much. Moving forward, we have communications and reports from heads of departments. Dear Mayor Wong, at the Planning Board meeting held on February 17th, 2015, the Planning Board voted to recommend the following year 41 Community Development Block Grant Program. And there is a copy of the letter from Commissioner Laxo to the mayor. Everybody have this in their packet. Just making sure that y'all got it. And under other communications, we have a statement of account from the Pittsburgh Retirement System.
Move it, place it in file in the clerk's office.
Thank you. Moving forward to the agenda.
I just have a question on the letter on the appointment of the Deputy Commissioner of Water. This doesn't have to come before the council for appointment? Is this not a division head? Didn't we pass an ordinance change saying that all department and division heads have to come before us for an appointment?
Can you solicit a barret?
I have not really examined it, councilor, so I'd have to take a look to see if this would qualify.
Please.
On the agenda, we have the Public Works Committee, Counselor Caddy, meeting February 24th, 2015.
On our agenda, 02914, Counselor Joel Caddy, construct the rotary roundabout at the corner of Electric Ave and Rollstone Street using funds acquired by the Bavensi Corp. and using our DPW for the construction. It was held in committee. Commissioner Laxo reported that Mass Highway is supporting this petition or this rotary, and they're going to help with the design of the rotary.
23214, Counselor Jody Joseph, and residents of Goodfellow Drive to accept Goodfellow Drive as a public way. It's held in committee. 24514, Counselor Joel Caddy and various city residents to make Main Street a one-lane street with a bike lane on the left and an angle parking on the right from Blossom Street to Old City Hall, including parking at Monument Park for the library only. Also raised crosswalks for pedestrian safety. That was held in committee. 28214, Kenneth Matson, president of Matson Homes Incorporated, to accept the portion of Parker Hill Drive from its northbound terminus at the intersection of Briarwood Drive to Briarwood Drive as a public way. It was granted, but pending and awaiting the report from City Property Committee and the Planning Board. 29214, Counselor Jody Joseph and Laurie Stone to place a berm at 139 Rollstone Road. Current berm doesn't go all the way to the driveway apron. That was granted. 29314, Counselor Mike Kishmerick to repair a section of sidewalk on Marshall Street from Johnson Street to Simon Street. It was held in committee because we can't see the sidewalk right now because of the snow. 29714, Counselor Angelo Beazall to change resident-only parking ordinance number 320-06 on Snow Street from 325 feet southerly of Pearl Street northerly to 270, 270 feet southerly on Pearl Street. Be changed to from 325 southerly of Pearl Street and northerly to 30 feet southerly of Pearl Street. Considered by committee an error, already reviewed in public safety and granted. 29814, Counselor Angelo Beazall to remove a city-owned tree in front of 48 Cabot Street that has caused damage to the home located there. That was granted. 29914, Louis Quidos to cut a tree on Washington Street in front of 11 Washington Street. Lots of bug holes that was given leave to withdraw. 22415, Counselor Amy Green to install a guardrail along Crawford Street to provide a barrier to prevent autos from ending up on Pittsburgh Airport property. Be amended to add, install 800 linear feet of guardrail per Zone A on the attached map. It was granted as amended. 22615, Counselor Michael Kishmerick to mitigate water runoff and ice buildup issues on Tapio Street. It was given leave to withdraw. And 2715, Counselor Dean Tran to remedy the drainage issue between 86 and 100 Tibbetts Circle was held in committee.
Move that the Public Works Committee report be accepted.
Second. We have a motion second that the Public Works Committee report be accepted. All those...
I want to pull 024-15.
Counselor, would that be okay?
Sure.
That's the counsel who made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a motion second to accept the Public Works Committee report excluding 02415. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 02415, Counselor Amy Green to install a guardrail along Crawford Street to provide a barrier to prevent autos landing up on the Pittsburgh Airport property. Be amended to add, install 800 linear feet of guardrail per Zone A on the attached plan. And the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee was to grant this as amended. Speaking to the...
Move that 02415 be accepted.
Second. Motion second that 02415 be adopted. Speaking to the motion. Counselor Boach.
I want to know if we have any traffic studies or documentation stating that people actually got hurt when they hit their things. Do we have any kind of documentations on that? Because the way I understand it, the DPW meeting wasn't the Safety Committee, it was the DPW. We're going to put in about 3,000 square, 3,000 feet of guardrail. Am I right or wrong? A, B, and C?
Just A.
Huh?
Just A.
Just A for now.
Yes.
Then we're going to go back and do another at a cost of $110,000. If we adopt all three.
Counselor, that's not what's before us.
All right.
We need to keep your comments to what is specifically before us in 02515, not speculate on what might occur afterwards.
Okay. So do we have any documentation stating that there have been accidents there?
Are you asking me? I don't have...
I'm asking.
Oh, I don't have any documentation, no.
The only documentation I have was provided by Scott Ellis that stated that there have been, I think it's been 17 accidents there in that specific Zone A in the last five years.
Counselor Caddy.
I don't know anything about a traffic study, but I lost, a friend of mine died where this specific area is back in the early 90s. And my time on the police department, this had always been a problem. This stretch of road has always been a problem.
Counselor Joseph.
I just find it interesting that when I had put in a petition to get rutted sidewalks cut into that area along the edge of the roadway so that people would, if they were veering to off the road, they would wake up by hitting the, you know, the rumbles along where you would go on the highway in this area, and that was too expensive. But yet, 800 linear feet of guardrail is cheaper. I don't get it. So I don't, there probably would be other ways to do this. I mean, the fence is already there to stop the traffic from falling into the property. Why wouldn't we just use a rumble strip or something like that to wake people up before they go off the road? Because this isn't an area where they're going off the road because they're being forced. It's usually because they're falling asleep or something, or they're going too fast around the corners. So I don't understand where this is cheaper than just putting grooves in the side of the road.
Counselor Dina Tally.
I would like to know how much this is going to cost? And where's it coming from? 800 feet of guardrail. What does that cost?
$27, $27 linear foot.
Commissioner Laxo.
The guardrail is $27 per linear foot, so we're talking $22,000, $23,000. We'd have to pay for it out of chapter 90 funds.
So we're going to use chapter 90 funds, which is supposed to be for road repairs? Primarily, supposed to be for road repairs. So if I'm a resident at home and I live on a street that's, I'm not criticizing you, Commissioner, I'm just saying in general, if we, I think it's safe to say that our city's streets are less than optimal condition. We're using, so when I hear that chapter 90 funds are appropriated, I think immediately road paving or road repair work. I know we buy some capital equipment on it, but when I hear that we're going to put a guardrail in one area of the city where there are other areas of the city that I'm sure need guardrails, and this isn't a criticism of the petition, I'm just, this is a general comment about this. I would expect chapter 90 funds, what little we get, to go towards road condition improvements, which can also lead to accidents, all the potholes that we have. $23,000 is probably not a lot of money to do that, but there are probably several components of road that are long in mileage, but you can do a section of them for $23,000, or you can do a small road for $23,000. My point is, I don't like having the DPW siphon funds away from chapter 90 to put in a guardrail in one location of the city that has accident problems, when there are other areas of the city that have the same problem. That money should be for road repairs. So I have to be careful the next time a resident asks me, why hasn't my street been paved? And not tell them, well, because we don't have enough money. That's only if we spend $23,000 here or $10,000 there out of the million we get on things other than road repairs. So the residents at home listening, apparently we spend money not for road repairs out of chapter 90. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. What deflated me a little bit about this particular petition is, didn't we just a couple of weeks ago, okay, a few million dollars for federal money and state money, and we threw some money in there as well? Couldn't this have been part of that package if some thinking was done a little bit ahead of time, that this could have been part of the federal grant that was given to us? But it wasn't, so I think they're basically saying, okay, City Councilor, you know, it's in your court now. And it shouldn't be in our court. That should have been handled weeks ago when they came before us asking to change some things at the airport. So I have no doubt about the safety in that area. I'm sure there's a problem. But I wish that the Airport Commission would have decided a little bit earlier to have this part of their plan. They didn't do that.
I'd like to follow up on that and say that, well, this is a dangerous spot in the city, and there have been numerous accidents, fatalities there. When it reads, "to provide a barrier to prevent autos from ending up on the Pittsburgh Airport property," that's a Pittsburgh Airport issue. Pittsburgh Airport acts as an enterprise fund. They generate revenue, they spend that revenue. They spend that revenue on building buildings, they spend that revenue on fixing the runways, they spend that revenue, however, the commissioners of the airport decide to spend that revenue. I think they should have decided to spend $23,000 in revenue that they generated this year on putting up a barrier to prevent automobiles from ending up on their property. That's just my take. Counselor Green.
This was brought forward again because, as I understood it years ago, there was money that was set aside to provide, I think it was 1,800 feet of guardrail or barrier along that property years ago. So, and again, I think Mr. Laxo could probably touch on that some more, that this was just brought up again because of the amount of accidents due to speeding on that stretch of Crawford Street. Thank you.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Being on the Public Safety Committee, I'm wondering why this wouldn't be on the Public Safety Committee agenda, being a traffic issue, being an accident issue, since we get all those other issues before our committee. Again, got to stress this because usually gets lost in translation. This is not a criticism of the councilor, this is not a criticism of the commissioner. But I ask myself, with the limited funds we get, what makes this so special over everything else? So to hear that chapter 90 money is being used for this purpose, when it could be questionably used by the airport, benefit the airport as well, who's self-sustaining, there's absolutely no way I'm going to support this. I mean, if it was $1,000, fine, but $23,000, that could do a small street. No way. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
I just, I don't want to be graphic, but I lost my uncle in that stretch of road about 100 yards before the entrance to the airport, and he was impaled by the guardrail when he was forced off the road. If he had just gone off the road and hit the fence, he would probably be alive today where the fence is further down the road. But he was driven off the road by people that were racing on that road, and he was impaled by the guardrail and killed. So I'm not really in favor of putting guardrails up along that stretch. Right now, they're going off the road, they're hitting the fence. They're damaging the fence. We replaced the fence, they're still alive.
Counselor Boach.
Yeah, it's nothing against you, Amy, but I feel this way, that if we have a problem with speeding, we should start enforcing the rules that we have throughout the city. That's all we get, is phone calls, speeding, 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 speeding. I think we had 21 deaths from 2008 to now, 21 to 22 car accidents, some, just car accidents, but we had 22 people lose their lives in the city of Pittsburgh between, I think, 2008, if I'm not mistaken, to 2000 to now. And it's speeding. We have to enforce the rules. I talked to Officer McNamara, and he said maybe we should put some policemen down there and have them out there ticketing for speeding. But that's the only reason why I brought it up, is because I don't want to spend that kind of money on that guardrail. When I get, I feel like, Mark, the streets are terrible, especially Kimbo Street now, a major artery, all bumpy and everything.
Counselor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also agree with Counselor Dina Tally. I always thought that chapter 90 was supposed to be used for fixing and restructuring the roads and paving the roads and so forth. I have the same concern. I put in a, I put in a petition to remedy the drainage and at Tibbetts Circle, and there was a testimony from the residents, which I sent to all the committee members, testifying that it's a safety issue. The commissioner also testified that it's a safety issue, but yet it was held in committee. So I question what is the charter of the committee in choosing what is a safety issue when... car accidents, some, just car accidents, but we had twenty-two people lose their lives in the city of Pittsburgh between, I think, two thousand eight, if I'm not mistaken, to two thousand to now. And it's speeding. We have to enforce the rules. I talked to Officer McNamara, and he said, "Maybe we should put some policemen down there and have them out there ticketing for speeding." But that's the only reason why I brought it up, is because I don't want to spend that kind of money on that guard rail. When I get, I feel like, Mark, the streets are terrible, especially Kimbo Street now, a major artery, all bumpy and everything.
Counselor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also agree with Counselor Dina Tally. I always thought that chapter 90 was supposed to be used for fixing and restructuring the roads and paving the roads and so forth. I have the same concern. I put in a, I put in a petition to remedy the drainage in, at Tibbetts Circle, and there was a testimony from the residents, which I sent to all the committee members, testifying that it's a safety issue. The commissioner also testified that it's a safety issue, but yet it was held in committee. So I question, what is the charter of the committee in choosing what is a safety issue? Thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
I would just say, you see a petition like this come forward, we've all seen it before. What Counselor Green is asking for is a guard rail to solve a problem. We vote no for the guard rail, but we're not solving the problem. So my question is, our discussion should be, what can we do to solve the problem? If we're not willing to spend twenty-three thousand dollars on a guard rail, well, we just heard tonight, at least two people we know have died in that area, let's solve the problem. Let's, if we're not going to vote on this, let's, someone come up with an idea, and let's solve, let's fix this thing, because that's really the issue.
Counselor, I had an idea. My idea was that the airport pay for it.
We asked the airport to pay for it that night, and they did say they didn't have the funding.
Counselor Joseph.
I mean, I know I had brought the petition earlier to put rumple strips along the side of the road, so that if people were starting to fall asleep or something, it would wake them up, because it, and at the time, again, like, hating to bring up Officer McNamara, but he brought up the fact that we needed to have a zero tolerance, thirty-five mile an hour zone. You go down Airport Road, they clock you at thirty-six miles an hour, you get a ticket. Okay? And that was his, that was the, that was the enforcement and solution that I was given by the police department at that time, rather than putting rumple strips or, I don't know what you call those things, the grooved side of the road, so that people know that they're going off the road. And that was, that was at the Public Works meeting that I had put in that petition a year ago, that that was the solution. And I don't know if we've even seen one speed trap or one person taking radar on that road since then. And it was committed to me at that time, that he would go out there with a nose, with a zero tolerance, you're doing thirty-six, and the thirty-five, you're going to get a ticket. Okay? It's one of those areas where it's curvy, and it's dangerous, and it needs to be enforced. And it was committed to me at that time, when we didn't get the rumple strips, that enforcement was going to take place, because that was the solution. And that hasn't happened. So is this, is a guard rail the solution? It doesn't, it doesn't hold a fine.
Counselor Caddy.
Could I suggest that we send this over to the Public Safety Committee and give our new chief an opportunity to work with Officer McNamara to try to come up with a solution?
I can't do that until after the vote is taken, if we have a motion, we'll second on the floor, but certainly recommend that that occur.
Counselor Bean.
Mr. President, I was going to make the same, I was going to voice the same concern, is that I've heard Public Safety stated three or four times that I would probably consider voting against the current motion, and would be in favor of putting it to Public Safety, let the experts take a look at it and see if there's another solution that may be less costly and maybe more effective.
Counselor Koushmeric.
I too was going to raise a similar sentiment, that this is tending more towards a safety issue. However, we did, as a council, send this to Public Works. Counselor Green acknowledged that there was an issue that needed to be remedied. She put in the petition so that it be addressed. This council voted to then send it to Public Works instead of Public Safety. So Public Works, seeing it in front of them, they took action, seeing that the issue needed to be addressed. Counselor Dina Tally brought up a good point of, how are we as a community defining chapter 90 fund, funding, and how strictly are we adhering to roads versus, you know, road safety issues? So, you know, certainly if this doesn't pass tonight, I'd be interested to see this go before Public Safety. Thank you.
I would ask that whoever made the motion to adopt O-2415, rescind that motion and make a motion to send it to Public Safety then. If you'd like.
I will rescind my motion.
Second.
Is that a motion to send it to Public Safety?
You rescinding your, your...
O-2415 be sent to Public Safety?
Second.
We have a motion to second that O-2415 be sent to Public Safety. All those in favor? All those opposed? It is unanimous. Orders Finance, O-3515, order transfer forty-two thousand five hundred to information technology expenses from reserve for other municipal services.
Finance.
O-3615, order to appropriate one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, same to be charged against, oh, we already did that one, sorry. Okay, now we're on to Orders Continued Discussion. Counselor Koushmeric.
What a privilege. I'd just like to ask that we move O-03015 and O-03115 to the end of the agenda, so that Counselor Clark and I may participate in the rest of the meeting before we recuse ourselves from those items.
Do that. Then we'll move forward to O-3715, Special Permit, Norman St. Dennis to reoccupy a single-family, non-conforming building, abandoned or not used for more than two years, located at thirty-seven Prospect Street, public, uh, Pittsburgh, Mass. Public hearing, go ahead. Motion to thirty-seven fifteen be sent to a public hearing on April 7th, 2015?
Second.
We have a motion to second that O-3715 be sent to a public hearing on April 7th, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Petitions.
Move thirty-eight fifteen, up to and including forty-one fifteen, be sent to their respective committees.
Second.
We have a motion to second that thirty-eight fifteen, up to and including forty-one fifteen, be sent to their respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. We're back to Orders Continued Discussion. Counselor Koushmeric.
President, because of my employment at the university, I refuse myself from this discussion and deliberation.
Counselor Clark?
As well. Thank you, gentlemen.
It's getting to be that I don't think people like me anymore.
You just figuring that out now, don't you? Motion to approve thirty-fifteen and thirty-one fifteen.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt O-3015, in order pursuant to Section 3-57 of Dakota City of Pittsburgh, John B. Barrett, City Solicitor, be authorized to engage special counsel to represent the city in relation to potential litigation concerning the Landry Arena. And O-3115, in order to appropriate five thousand dollars, same to be charged against available funds, accredited to law, other legal expenses. We'll stop by speaking to the motion. I want to be clear about this. I believe that what the Park Board wants us to do, and what they're looking for, has very little to do with Pittsburgh State University and their plans for the Landry Arena. I believe that the Park Board rightfully feels that in 2007, the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the city council superseded the Park Board's authority regarding parkland in what we do with it. I wish that in 2007, they'd come forward and we'd had a fight and an argument regarding that, because I believe they're probably right. I think Mr. Barrett wrote a letter two or three months ago, saying that he believed they were right. I believe that the Park Commissioners want to be recognized as the authority regarding the use of parkland within the city of Pittsburgh, in that this situation with the Landry Arena and Pittsburgh State University has given them the impetus to come forward and say, "This never should have happened before, now we want to address that." And I don't have any problem with that. I will vote for the five thousand dollars when we come to a vote, and my reason for voting for the five thousand dollars is to support the Park Commissioners in their efforts. I don't, I would hope that we wouldn't need to spend the five thousand dollars, and there wouldn't be, need to be any litigation, that the Park Commissioners and the city of Pittsburgh, not Pittsburgh State University, that the Park Commissioners in the city of Pittsburgh can sit down at the table and figure out who has authority over the property that's in the parks. That's the key that needs to be addressed here, because Park Commissioners say to me, "Well, if it happened the way it did here, you could sell, the city council and the mayor could sell Cogswell Park for a dollar and have somebody else do something else with it." I don't think that's ever going to occur, but I understand their sentiment. And the sentiment is that they want to be the people who decide when we give away parkland or we change use of the parkland. And that's really their, their reason for being, one of their reasons for being. And I think we need to get back to that and address that as a separate issue. I do not believe that the Park Board of Park Commissioners truly wants the Wallace Civic Center and the Landry Arena back. I don't believe that the city of Pittsburgh wants the Wallace Civic Center and the Landry Arena back. I don't believe the city council wants the Wallace Civic Center and the Landry Arena back, because from my observations, we closed it twice, and it was going to be closed a third time until we changed what was happening down there. So I really, I will vote for the five thousand dollars tonight, but I hope we're able to separate out the two issues. And I'm not saying that the users and the Save the Landry Arena people don't have a genuine argument or a genuine concern for the use of that Landry Arena, that should be addressed. But I really think we've got apples and oranges here, and we're putting them all in the same basket, and it's never going to get resolved as long as we're trying to deal with all of those components at the same time. We need, we need to separate it out, and we need to deal with that. I would like to have the Park Boards send a letter to this council, asking them to come forward and talk with us and the mayor regarding this before it goes to litigation, because I think it can be resolved without litigation. But if it needs to go to somebody to do that, do that. And then deal separately with Pittsburgh State University and what they want to do with the Landry Arena and the questions that are raised by the Save the Landry Arena group.
Counselor Caddy. I want to say I too will support funding this, and I do hope that we never have to spend the money. What I want to say is, I want to know what's, what's in this for our children in this city? That was given to us for our children? If it's not going to return to a skating rink, my question has, I've never changed my opinion, what's in it for our children? What's the city get? Earlier, you heard that I had mentioned that the college has to do what's right for the college, and the city has to do what's right for the city. I'm not mad at anybody. What I'm worried about is, if we don't settle this today, years down the road, thirty years down the road, forty years down the road, fifty years down the road, when we're gone, who's going to remember that the city ever even owned that building? So if we're going to go back into negotiations, I think that needs to be settled. I think that's city property being leased. I hope that the college and the city both understand, again, when we're not here anymore, that was given to the city, it was ours. And I'm afraid if we don't, if we don't solve this right now, now's the time to do it. Don't let it linger. And I think, I think hopefully cool heads will prevail, and we can solve this. Counselor Joseph.
Again, my motion is to approve this, because I believe that the Parks Commission needs to be made whole, and they need to be the rightful owner of the Parks property. If we did something improperly ourselves, or if something was done improperly, then get a judge rulings that it was done improperly and get it straightened out. But when I have somebody come to, before us from Lunenburg or another city, and ask me as a city elected official, if I work for the citizens of Pittsburgh, or if I work for Pittsburgh State University, that's probably the last time I'm going to listen to that argument. Okay? We do what we do because it's what we need to do. It's not because we work for the university, we work for the betterment of the city of Pittsburgh. And I just want to say, I kept quiet during the presentation, but I took great insult to somebody from another city, asking me if I work for my constituents, or if I work for the university, because I know who I work for.
Thank you. Counselor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. You mentioned that you believe that the Parks Commission doesn't want the Civic Center or the Landry Arena back. I'd like to pose that question to the Parks Commission, to see if they share the same belief as you do.
Mr. O'Shea.
Counselors, I'd do step number one first. Step number one is to find out if we own that land. Okay? We'll get to step two when we find out that one. If we don't own the land, then what do we care what step two is? Okay? Step one is that we want to know if we own that land, and if it's ours, we want it back. It just happens to have a building on it.
Mr. President, my understanding, and maybe the city solicitor can answer and chime in, is that we lease the property to Pittsburgh State University. That means that under those terms, we own the land. So what is the argument here?
The argument is that the Landry Arena's boundary lines got moved from in front of the building to the rear of the building, so they could make that a package. And they sent it to Boston without getting the Parks Commission's okay, determining that it's not used anymore. That's where the legality is. If you, if you look at the boundary lines, they took the boundary line from in front of the building and put it in the back of the Landry Arena, so they can make that a package.
City Solicitor, was the moving of the boundary line part of the lease?
I believe that it was a prerequisite to the lease, that the legislation officially approved the fact that this land should be transferred from Coolidge Park to the Civic Center, and that land included the Landry Arena, so that that could be incorporated into the lease with the college.
So moving the boundary was out of the purview of the council back then? The council decision was based on the lease itself? It wasn't part, the moving of the boundary was a legislative feeling that was out of the decision that the council made in regards to the Landry Arena? Am I correct?
No, I think there were two parts to it, Counselor. I think that one part was proving the lease, the other part was the fact that the city solicitor, Deborah Phillips, saw that back in 1972, the request that the land from Coolidge be released for the Landry had never been done. The board had voted for it, but then there was supposed to be special legislation that would allow the transfer of that land to the Civic Center to provide for the room for the Landry to be built. That never happened, and what the council approved, sort of, in a way, almost retroactively, but it was without the Park Board's approval, was to transfer that land from Coolidge Park to the Civic Center property. And normally, what would happen is you would, it would go to the Parks Board, the Parks Board would vote yea or nay, whether or not this land was needed for Parks purposes or playground purposes anymore. And if they had voted yes, then that would have been a done deal, quite frankly. But the Parks Board never voted on this back in 2007.
Mr. President, through you, just another question to the Park Commissioner. He stated there's two steps or two components to, to the goal of the Parks Commission. If, and hypothetically, if the courts decides that the Civic Center and the Landry Arena still falls under the jurisdiction of the city, what is Plan B? I believe that you mentioned Plan B would be taking back those properties. If the city takes back those properties, what do we have a plan in place for the city to take care of the properties?
Furthermore, it's not the city's property. It's the parkland, it's owned by the Park Commission under Mass. General Law. Okay? It's not the city buildings, they were never city buildings. They never put a dime in those buildings. They were supposed to be self-sufficient. Everybody who ran those was supposed to do their job, and they were supposed to fundraise and do things down there, like circuses, like they used to have, bands, concerts, and all that stuff, to raise the money to keep those buildings open and continue. Due to the fact that we are who- Due to the fact that we are whoever, put people in place down there, didn't know how to manage it, and it just went down the tubes. Back in the, back in 1972, I believe, that if they weren't going to be a, a running entity, it was supposed to, both buildings was to be, supposed to be returned back to the park commission. Never happened. They skipped that step.
So do you, are you optimistic that when the parks commission, if it does happen, takes over these properties, that the parks commission is able to sustain the properties?
No, we're not saying that. We're not saying we want to run it. We don't want to say that we want to come to the fact that if it is us, then you're going to negotiate with us, not the city, with us, because it's our property. If the city deems to want to...
John, are you saying Pittsburgh State could negotiate with the park board?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. We're not, we're not saying that we're not going to negotiate. We're just saying we want to, we want to get the legality done first. Okay? The legality is, was in your, not in your ballpark, but it was, there was a wrong done, so therefore we're trying to undo that so that later in years, that nobody in the city, no mayor or the city council can give away parkland without going through this park commission.
So John, your, your ultimate goal is to be able to get to the negotiating table?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Dean Tally.
It is stated several times that if you don't support this, you don't support the children. We have 80% of our schools on free and reduced lunch, and a multi-purpose, multi-season facility would service our community more than one sport. When I hear all of the arguments and I weigh them heavily, I ask myself, what is the end game with this? Because that is important for me to tell John and Jane Q., taxpayer, why I'm taking $5,000 out of their pocket and not putting into something that they actually want it to be spent on. There has to be an end game to this, this means, and no one can provide that. I hear negotiation. I am not saying the parks board doesn't have a case. I'm not against what the parks board is doing. What, what concerns me is, what is the ultimate goal in this case only, not future cases, this case only? If this is such a critical issue, why wasn't this brought up eight years ago? Why wasn't their litigation brought up eight years ago? The reason why, ladies and gentlemen, this is happening now, and Counselor Hayes said we have to split the two components, we, we can't. The reason this is going on is because of the Landry and because of what the college wants to do, the university wants to do it. That's it. If they were going to keep it ice, we wouldn't even be here. And if it was going to be ice for the next 30 years, no one's going to raise an issue about how it was done. This is why this is coming before us, because the use of that facility is being changed. And what the public needs to understand is, if we didn't do what we did eight years ago, that building would be rubble. That building would look like Water Street, Fire Station, City Hall, name any building you want in the city, because we are abysmally terrible at being landlords. So my goal in this, in voting for this or not, is to say, what is the end game? We win, great. The university negotiates with the parks board, great. Who's to stop the uni, what's to stop the university from saying, "You can take back the Landry, we're done with it"? Or, as some suggested, they're bluffing. I'm not willing to call their bluff, because I'm not a risk taker. They say to the city of Pittsburgh, "You're going to have to pony up some money to do what you are requiring us to do." Not going to happen for me. We just read an article that we have $20 million of capital projects that are on the docket for 2020, I'm sorry, $200 million in capital projects. We have $200 million in unfunded liabilities. We don't have money to put into that building, which is why it was closed twice, and it would have been closed a third time, and that means no one in the city would have been able to use the building for the last seven years. So if I sound like I'm a cheerleader for the university, then I'm guilty as charged, I guess, because I'm just a realist. The university and the state bailed this city out. They bailed us out. And it's because of them, we have ice there for seven years. So I will not support this tonight, because if we win, what's going to happen? And I have a right to know that, right now. What's going to happen? What are the negotiations going to be? What are the terms? Because if it involves any amount of money we got to spend that we don't have, I'm not going to be happy, because that's why we closed it. That's why we gave it away, because it would have been useless to everyone. So if I had a gun to my head and someone said, either the university makes that a multi-use facility where more sports are included and more people can participate, as opposed to us taking it back and that building being boarded up, I think the choice is clear. And if that angers some people, I apologize. But again, the reality of the, the reality of the situation is, that building would be unoperable, inoperable, if this didn't happen. So going forward, we made a mistake. Going forward, we make sure we don't do it again. But I hope if that ever were to happen again, the appropriate people invested in this would raise the issue at that time, and not eight years later, when the college, the university is looking to do something different with it. You can't separate the two components. They go hand in hand with this whole issue. Otherwise, we wouldn't be discussing this. So the $5,000 specifically, it may cost us more. It may cost us nothing. But the constant refrain of, "This is going to hurt our children." I, I, I mean, I used to play street hockey. I also played ice hockey. Ice hockey is an extremely expensive sport, like skiing, like a lot of other specialty sports. Nothing else. I love ice hockey. But again, back to my first point about, we have 80% of our students on free and reduced lunch. So I look at the fact that a multi-use facility with all sports would probably cater to the community more than just ice, because that's the central argument here, is it's got to be ice, or it's got to be a component of ice. And I, I don't understand why the call, the university wouldn't say at the end, because they're probably tired of this too, "All right, Pittsburgh, you want ice? Here you go. Take it back." Or, "You want ice? All right, let's run the numbers. You owe us $700,000 a year to keep it ice. We'll front the other 700,000." Does anybody here know we're going to get 700,000? 200,000? 100,000? We have a police force that's decimated and our roads look like they've been pumpkin-bombed? So I'm not, I'm not trying to belittle the motivation. I'm sorry. They have a legitimate case to make. I just have a hard time understanding why this is coming up eight years later, if not for the fact that this is going on, and if not for the fact that going forward, we make sure this doesn't happen again, and if it does happen again, it's raised at that time. But that is critical for me, is what is the end game? No one can tell me. No one can tell me with any definitiveness, because that's important for me in order to vote to spend money that we don't have. What is the end game? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Can I just?
I believe that it's important...
One second. Can I just make a suggestion? I know we went into executive session last week to discuss anything that had to do with tactics and concerns when it came to how we were going to address things legally. Okay? And I'd hate, I think our discussion has gone into our tactics and our negotiations as opposed to the, what is in front of us. And I'd, I'd hate to see us, if we do have an issue, give away anything that we have in our hand for negotiation in a public meeting, when we're only here to discuss whether or not we want to allocate $5,000 to determine the, whether this boundary is correct or not. So I just, I would hope that as a committee, we would keep our discussion to that, as opposed to anything that could lead to a strategical possibility for the city as to what our negotiations would be with the university or anybody else in the future.
So that's a request, that the continued discussion, that's not a request to go into executive session again?
If we are going to discuss our strategies, we should be discussing our strategies in executive sessions. So if anybody wants to discuss strategies, I'll make a motion to go into executive session. But if you want to discuss whether you want to approve $5,000 or not, that's fine with me, but that's, we're going into strategy, and I just think that's an executive session.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Green.
I'm voting to approve the $5,000 that's before us to get it straightened out. And in addition, I would like to know if in the 99-year lease that the city gave to the university, where specifically in that document, as a leased building, would it ever say that it would be all right to demolish the building? One. And then anytime that you own property and you want to change the use of that property, you have to come before city council to do that. So if the university is or wants to, or the city or parks want to change the use of that facility, that, that has to come before us. So I would like the legalities of that straightened out. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Caddy.
John and I have been friends, or we were friends back then. Today, I'm not so sure, but I see it as fixing, fixing the wrong. Back when this was voted on, I voted against it. Because of John and mine's friendship, I knew that the parks board didn't vote for this, and I knew that John was troubled by that. And it was one of the reasons why I voted against it. Counselor Tran earlier talked about the lease.
Once the council voted on this, we never saw the lease. That was, that happened after our vote, and we weren't included on any lease. If we're going to move forward with any agreements, the agreements need to be properly documented. So in the city's future, we don't forget the fact that the parks board is in charge of that land. That's the wrong that needs to be righted.
And I want to agree with Counselor Dean Tally. I've been worried about the thought with the kids this whole time, that playing hockey is a very expensive sport. I would say the major majority of our children will never have the opportunity. And I say that with, I've always said it about Mount Wachusett, that the kids from Pittsburgh will never know what it's like to get on a pair of skis and ski at Mount Wachusett, because it's such an expensive sport. So from the beginning, I have not changed my opinion. Again, what's in it for our kids? You know, the kids are our future. What are our kids going to get out of this? Thank you.
Counselor Beal.
Thank you. So 43 years ago is when this all started, and I've looked at more paperwork than I have ever cared to in my life, and we'll sit down with anybody and talk to them about this. 43 years ago, the park commissioners of Pittsburgh had an issue with giving up this piece of land to the city, because of the fact that they were afraid of exactly what we're talking about today. So what they did was, they put a stipulation in that if it were to go to the city, two things were to happen. First of all, that it would become the Kamala-Lita skating rink, and secondly, that if it wasn't acted upon by the state legislation, in six months, that it would revert back to parks land. That's what we're talking about tonight. So to give you a little history, because I know people are saying, "Where was everybody back in 2007?" I have newspaper articles, if anyone wants to see them, Mr. Rashidi arguing with the council president at the time about the legality of it. Okay? But I do want to let the city know that back in 2007, the city council and our present mayor ratified the vote that the people took 43 years ago, that basically says, they ratified the vote, the city council, on June 6, 1972, accepting a transfer of land located in Coolidge Park for the construction of the Kamala-Lita Landry Skating Arena. Tousso transfer such land as described in certain proposed special legislation attached hereof, and a petition of the general court to enact in special legislation, providing for the use of such land for the Civic Center purposes and according with previously approved legislation in section 3, chapter 88 of 2007. So basically, what everyone did in 2007 said, "We agree with the park commissioners back in 1972." And you passed it. The problem that you had was, that land had already reverted back to the parks, number one. And number two, there was a piece of the Landry Arena that still sat in Coolidge Park. So during that time, the planning board actually put an AR, an approval not required, to transfer that piece out of Coolidge Park. They went before the parks board, and not only did they deny that, but they also said that they had problems with what had happened back in 1972. So anybody here that says the parks board did not shout out back in 2007? I have newspaper articles, if somebody wants to look at them, from there. Basically, Mr. Rashidi, I think, was there at the time, basically telling people that there was problems with it and they wanted it fixed. So I will definitely vote for this. 43 years, we've got to fix this, and once and for all, it's got to be fixed. And once it's fixed, it may have to go back to state legislation to be adopted, but it definitely needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Counselor Boishen.
John, an all fairness to people back in 1972. I believe that they did try and have concerts down there and everything, because I remember when I was a teenager, there were some concerts, and I believe they got their own property down there, went to court to fight because of noise and all, and all different other activities. So there was concerts being, they tried to get concerts in there and tried to have different activities there. But every time that they tried, I recall my, my regulations were right, they would go to court. He would go to court and fight it. He didn't want to have any kind of concerts. I think, I, I forget when, but I just wanted to rectify that statement that you made.
Okay, we have 035-15 and 031-15. We have a motion to adopt. Any further discussion? 31 and 30. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? To an opposition. Thank you, counselors. Motion to adjourn. Second. A motion and a second to adjourn before that, counselors. Sally Craigan asked me to let everybody know the Pittsburgh Ravens and Microchip Clinic, Saturday, March 7, 9 to 11 a.m., Pittsburgh Fire Department, 23 North Street. All those in favor of adjourning? Aye. All opposed? Where I adjourn, thank you, counselors.